Good evening, folks. At this point, we'll call the Tuesday, July 17, 2012, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, I'll call upon Commissioner Renee Griffith to deliver our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you have given us another day to be here, another day to serve, another day to be with the people that you have blessed this county with. Father, we just thank you for the rain that you have given us. We thank you that you rain on our land when we need it. And, Lord, we pray for the men and women that are serving overseas, that you protect them, watch over them, and keep their families safe. We thank you for the men and women that protect us here at home. We thank you for their service. Lord, we just pray for wisdom tonight as we go about the county's business, that you give us the wisdom to make right and just decisions. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Okay. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'll call on our county manager, Mr. Ron Smith. Are there any adjustments of the agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have two additions and one item I'd like to remove. The first addition would be Memo Number 10A, and this is a request from the Fire Marshal's Office concerning a pyrotechnics permit. And I believe that would fall under "aye" on the agenda.
Okay.
And the second addition is Memo Number 7, which is "C" on your agenda. And I'd like to add a Budget Amendment Number 2 to that as part of the actual request.
Okay.
And under closed session, I'd like to remove the attorney-client item.
Okay. That's all you've got?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any adjustments coming from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda as amended.
Motion for approval, Chairman.
If a motion for approval comes from our Vice Chairman Marvin Norman, all in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no presentation of special recognitions and awards this evening. And we do have a couple of appointments before the board. And the first one is Ms. Dawn Befave. She desires to speak on behalf of a group of citizens requesting for the Animal Control Department to become a no-kill facility. Mr. Befave, if you'd come to the microphone, please.
Good evening. I have a couple of presentations that we've got together for you guys and also a petition, signed petition. I have a presentation here to start for you guys, for some pictures to play as...
I want to make sure we got that right.
Okay. Oh, yes, please. I'm representing a group of Iredell County members that have a real concern and a passion for the animals in our county that are being euthanized in staggering numbers every week at the animal control facility. I'm not sure this is playing. I'm not quite sure why that's not playing, but most of the stuff is in the presentations you got. It's been really hard to get concrete facts as we've been trying to get all this together. It's been rumored that approximately 600 animals are put to death each month in Iredell County. We have some statistics for the state for the years of 2006, 2007, '08, and '09. The records show that an average of 81 percent of all cats, 63 percent of all dogs in the public animal shelters are euthanized. Total cats put to death in this time period was 437,244, and total dogs were 402,308. We know that Iredell County numbers are included in these statistics. We would like to ask you to consider changing our county's records to zero cats and zero dogs by changing our animal controls to a no-kill facility. Animals don't deserve a death sentence just because they were born. We truly believe that with public education, affordable spay and neuter clinics, new foster care homes, fundraising projects, stricter laws concerning animal neglect, abuse, and along with the abolishment of puppy meals in this county can set a mark for the entire state to save the lives of those innocent animals. All of us are willing to help make this happen, and we know as a whole that the mindset of the public has to change. We have to get them educated as to the horrors of what happens to that dog or cat that they've dropped off at animal control. A lot of excuses are used, such as moving, landlord issues, cost of pet maintenance, lack of time to interact with the pet, allergies, inadequate facilities, or they just have too many pets. But none of these reasons justify death. We've been told that Iredell County uses the gas chamber. We would like to ask if you have ever been to the animal control facility on a kill day? Have you ever looked into the eyes of the dog or the cats as they waited? Have you ever seen them taken for the last walk to the gas chamber? Have you ever heard their cries as they begin to inhale the gas? I've got a copy of a viral letter that was written by an anonymous animal control worker, and I'd like to read a little bit of it to you. He says, "Yes, I gas dogs and cats for a living. I am an animal control officer in a very small town in central North Carolina. I'm in my mid-30s, and I have been working for the town in different positions since high school. There's not much work here, and working for the county provides good pay and benefits for a person like me with a higher education. I'm the person you all write about how horrible I am. I'm the one that gases the dogs and the cats and makes them suffer. I'm the one that pulls their dead corpses out of smelling of carbon monoxide and throws them into green plastic bags, but I'm also the one that hates my job and hates what I have to do. First of all, people out there, please don't judge me. God's judging me, and I know I'm going to hell. Yes, I'm going to hell, and I won't lie. It's despicable, cold, and cruel, and I feel like a serial killer. I'm not all to blame. If the law would mandate spay and neuter, lots of these dogs and cats wouldn't be here for me to gas. I'm the devil, and I know it, but I want people to see that there is another side to me besides the gas chamber man. The shelter usually gases on Friday morning. Fridays are the days that most people look forward to. This is the day that I hate and wish that time would stand still on Thursday night. Late after nobody's around, my friend and I go through a fast food line and buy $50 worth of cheeseburgers, fries, and chicken. I'm not allowed to feed the dogs on Thursday, for I'm told that it will make a mess in the gas chamber and why I waste the food. So on Thursday night, with the lights off, the shelter closed, I go to the saddest room that anyone can ever imagine, and I let all of the dogs out. I've never been bit in all my years of doing this. The dogs have never fought over the food, and my buddy and I open a Trapper, a cheeseburger, and chicken sandwich, and feed them. They allow the food, I mean, they swallow the food so fast that I don't believe they even taste it. Their tails are wagging, and some don't even go for the food. They roll over on their backs, wanting to scratch on their bellies. They start running, jumping, and kissing me and my buddy. They go back for, but go, they go back to their food, and then they come back to us. All their eyes are on us with such trust and hope, and their tails wag so fast that I have to come out with black and blues on my thighs. They devour the food, and then it's time for them to devour some love and peace. My buddy and I sit down on the dirty, peaced-in concrete floor, and we let the dogs jump on us. They lick us, they put their butts in the air to play, and they play with each other. Some lick each other, but most are glued on me and my buddy. I look into the eyes of each dog, and I give each dog a name. They will not die without a name. And then I give each dog at least five minutes of unconditional love and touch. I talk to them and tell them that I'm sorry that tomorrow they will die, grew some long torturous death at the hands of me in the gas chamber. Some tilt their heads and try to understand. I tell them that they are, they will be in a better place, and I beg them not to hate me. I tell them that I know I'm going to hell, but they will all be playing with the dogs and the cats in heaven. And after about 30 minutes, I take each dog individually into their feces-filled concrete jail cell and put them, pet them, and scratch them under their chins. Some give me their paw, and I really just want to die. I close the jail cell on each dog and ask them to forgive me. As my buddy and I are walking out, we watch as every dog is smiling at us. Some really don't even move their heads, but they will sleep with a full belly, however, with a false sense of security. As we walk out of the dog room, my buddy and I go to the cat room. We take our box and put the very friendly kittens and pregnant cats in our box, because our shelter doesn't keep tags on these cats. As I handpick which cats are going to make it out, I feel like I'm playing God, deciding who's going to live and die. We put the cats in my truck, and then we take them to neighboring counties who are no-kill facilities. We go to some exclusive neighborhoods, and we let a couple of cats out at a time. However, they are spayed and neutered when we do that, so therefore, there will be no more in that area. They don't want to run. They try to just stay with us. After I go through this every Thursday night, I go home and I take a shower, and then I take my anti-anxiety pills, and I drive to work, because it is now time for me to put these animals in the gas chamber. I put my earplugs in, and when I go to collect the dogs, the dogs are so excited to see me that they just jump up to kiss me and think they're going to play. I put them in the cage and take them to the gas chamber. They know, they just know. They can smell the death, and they can smell the fear. They start whimpering the second I put them in the box. The boss tells me to squeeze in as many as I can to save the gas. He watches, he knows I hate him, he knows I hate my job. I do as I'm told. He watches until all the dogs and the cats, thrown in together, are fighting and screaming. The sounds are very muffled to me because of my earplugs. He walks out, I turn the gas on, and walk out. I walk out as fast as I can. In 40 minutes, I have to go back and unload the dead animals. I pray that none survive, which happens when I overstuff the chamber. I pull them out with thick gloves, and the smell of carbon monoxide makes me sick. So does the vomit and blood and all the bowel movements. I pull them out, and I put them in plastic bags. They are in heaven now, I tell myself. I then start cleaning up the mess, the mess that you people are creating by not spaying neutering your animals, the mess that you people are creating by not demanding that a vet come in and do this humanely. You are the taxpayers, demand that this practice stop. So don't call me the monster, the devil, the gasser. Call the politicians, the shelter directors, and the county people the devil. Hit, call the governor, tell him to make it stop. As usual, I will take my sleeping pills tonight to drown out the screams I heard in the past before I discovered the earplugs. I will jump and twitch in my sleep, and I believe I'm starting to hallucinate. This is my life. Don't judge me. Believe me, I judge myself enough. If this is not enough to open everybody's eyes, we, the people, invite you, the council, to spend the day at the shelter on a kill day. Pick out just one of the animals on death row that day, touch it, talk to it, comfort it, follow its day from beginning to end. Give just one animal a few happy hours before its death. Then watch as it's loaded into the gas chamber and listen to its fears as the gas replaces the air and its breath, as the gas replaces the air as it breathes. We, as a group, are working on plans to start another rescue in this county. It's in the baby stages at this point, but we will see it through. We'd like to be granted the opportunity to have fundraisers to support it, volunteers to run it. We want to put up billboards, encourage spay and neuter practices, recruit all the vets in our county to volunteer their services at least two days a month for whatever the animals need. We want to continue our fight to have more strict laws against hoarders, animal cruelty offenders, and those who have backyard puppy meals. But most of all, we want to stop the killing. We have in front of you a booklet with all the information used to present our case to you. Please look at it. Give our God-given furry companions another chance. Much, much more can be viewed online, Google "animal gas chamber photos for a real awakening." We encourage you to set the standard for the entire state, ban the gas chamber, because the life you save might just be your next best friend. I was recently at Tractor Supply and adopted a 10-week-old puppy that somebody dropped off at the animal shelter. It was a mom and a whole litter of puppies, a beagles. So far, it's been the best four weeks of my life. I don't believe that any animal should die because we didn't do our part and help educate the county, help educate people. And we would just like to see that our animal shelter become a no-kill facility like those around us. Would anybody else like to say anything? That's all I have at this time. Please consider our proposal, and we thank you very much for giving us the chance to speak today.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have a Mr. Frank Delpiano. He desires to speak in reference to a cracked storm drain pipe on his property. Is he present? Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, state your name, please.
Frank Delpiano. First, I'd just like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today. Back in April of 2010, we noticed a divot in our lawn. This had turned into a huge sinkhole. It was four feet across and three feet deep. We weren't sure exactly what caused this. Took a while, but we hired a camera to go inside the storm drain. Storm drain runs vertical up my property, about 200, 250 feet. Where this was, was about 100 feet off the street. And what we had found out was that there are numerous breaks and cracks in the pipe. And everybody I spoke to, all the civil engineers I spoke to, all said the same thing, that the pipe was not installed correctly. So basically, it shifted, and any time it rains, the soil gets wet, and it starts getting into the pipe and washing away, and that's what caused the sinkhole. We just, we had, with this thing this large, we also noticed that the soil from underneath my driveway had eroded as well. So basically, my driveway was not supported. So we had to do something to get this fixed. We called the Department of Transportation and who actually is responsible for all the storm drains in the community, and they told me that they are only responsible for the first 10 feet off the street. After that, they're not responsible. The developer has since gone out of business, and he is, we can't even reach him. I did call the county, and they told me that basically there's, you know, I asked them first of all, you know, who was responsible for the inspection of this? And I was told that inspection was not required. And this is 15 feet away from my home. I, you can see in the photos as well, that we put a pool in, and that's about the same, it's about 15 feet away. So we've got, right now, there are numerous locations on the property that we've had holes, and it's just eroding away. We've got another fairly large one, it's probably about two feet by two feet, about a foot and a half deep. That's starting again, and again, that's right next to my driveway. Matter of fact, my neighbor had a dog running in the yard, and all of a sudden, he didn't see it, see the dog, and the dog just fell in. So, I mean, this is a very serious situation, very important safety hazard. The reason I'm coming to the county is that this is something that should have been inspected. The county did not require it, and I don't understand why. Something that is being this close to a home, it's just, you know, I'm sorry, it's just something that just can't be. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in a situation like this, but, I mean, at this point, I don't know what else to do. The state is not taking responsibility for it. The developer is no longer around. There was a company called Land Design who did the inspection for the sewers in the streets, and I did speak to the inspector on it, and I asked him if he inspected it. I said, "I inspected everything in there except for that pipe." And I asked him why, and he said, "Well, it wasn't required." So at this point, I'm just requesting that the county do the right thing and take responsibility for this pipe and the maintenance and the repair of it. That's really all I have.
Okay. Can I ask him a question? Sure. I'm looking over to see where you are. Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is in Mooresville?
On the map, I know where you are.
Okay. It's in Mooresville and not the city of Mooresville, it's in the county area.
Right. And, okay, but this pipe was put in by, I guess the developer put in the roads, and then they did the storm drains, then you bought the lot, and then the developer built the house?
Correct. But the county also knew that a home was going to go there, and they allowed the developer to put the pipe there, and they allowed the home to go there, and they knew that the state was not going to be responsible for it.
I haven't seen the photographs yet.
No, I'm sorry.
Did, when, when they scoped the pipe, did they, did they give you any indication that they thought that the pipe was put in, and what happened, did the water not go through the pipe and went under the pipe somehow, and then that created an uneven surface? And then, of course, a pipe can't handle any, a ceramic pipe or a concrete pipe can't handle any bending moment at all, so that's where you're going to get the cracks from? Or do they think it was just put in, broken?
They think that, well, from everybody I spoke to said, what causes this is that it was not packed correctly. So they have to pack the bottom of the pipe, lay the pipe in, and then pack the sides so that there's no movement. And it just, everybody I spoke, I've spoken to people from the county, I've spoken to people from the state, and they all said the same thing, it just wasn't packed correctly.
Okay. But you're saying the crack in the pipe is also on the top, because your soil has flown through it?
Right.
Could it have been, any indications that it was crushed by the vehicles coming in there to deliver supplies to build the house?
I don't, this is four feet down, so I don't know. But I don't know if you get a chance to take a look at the photos and see all the, and there's actually more cracks in there than what I've shown. I've only printed out a couple of pictures. I think there were 11 or 12 cracks altogether.
And what was the name of the developer for the property?
Robert Deanst was the developer, and it was Sundown Cove LLC.
That's one Jerry Santana. Yeah, that, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we'll call a meeting in the public. Hearing in consideration of amendments of Iredell County's voluntary and enhanced farmland preservation ordinance. That's Memo Number 3. Mr. Roskowski is with us this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Okay. Let me advance this. Okay. Whoa, we have jumped way ahead. Let's see here. Excuse me one second while I try to navigate this. Okay, this is all over the place. Hey, Rebecca. We've had trouble with this advancing PowerPoints in our planning board meetings. I'm wondering if that's what's happening. Yeah. But we're where we need to be for the first one, so I will try to move this forward. Thanks. Okay, as you're aware, Iredell County has a voluntary and enhanced farmland preservation ordinance. Yeah, this, my PowerPoint's not working, so I'm just going to talk to you tonight. How about that? What we have is an amendment that was actually a result of the state of North Carolina changing their general statutes as to what defines an eligible piece of farmland to participate in the voluntary and enhanced ag district program that we have. And simply, what they've done is instead of requiring that a piece of farmland be in that tax deferment, you no longer have to be in that program, and they've also opened it up to participating in any form of agriculture as defined by the general statute. So in your packet, we've referred to by reference what the general statute definition of agriculture is. And simply, what we are doing in our farmland preservation ordinance is just referring to that general statute. And that way, if it changes in the future, we don't have to come before the planning board and you again to change our language. We're just referring to that general statute, and we have copies of that, of course, on file for any of the public that may come to our office. So that's the ordinance amendment, the one amendment to the voluntary and enhanced farmland preservation ordinance. And this will have to be taken as a separate item. It is separate from our land development code. Therefore, I would suggest that you entertain any public comment. Of course, I'll address any questions you have, but this should be voted on separately because it is a separate ordinance.
Okay. This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter and share your concerns? If you care to do so, the mic is open. You can come and ask questions of our staff or this board? I guess not. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Roskowski? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close this public hearing, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we amend the Iredell County's voluntary and enhanced farmland preservation ordinances to reflect the definition of agriculture as outlined in the handout.
Motion for approval comes from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll once again call this meeting in the public hearing in consideration of land development code text amendments. Mr. Roskowski, she is again, sir.
All right. Thank you, and we'll see if we can get this PowerPoint going, too. You have a series of eight amendments there before you. As you are well aware, the land development code was initially enacted in July of last year, and we are doing an annual review of ordinance amendments that we would like to pursue, as well as any of the public or planning board would like us to pursue. And this is the first of two batches that you'll receive this year. The first is an amendment to the bona fide farm section of the ordinance. And again, this is similar to what I just explained for farmland preservation. Essentially, what has occurred is that the state... Essentially, what has occurred is that the state of North Carolina definitions for bona fide farms in the general statutes are changing, and actually, they change quite frequently now, and that's to allow more flexibility, actually. So, that's a good thing. But again, we don't want to have to change our ordinance every time, so we're just going to refer to that general statute and again have that on file. So, that's the crux of the First Amendment. I'll pause if you have any questions of me of that.
Any questions?
Okay, I'll move on to the second one. Thank you. Second one is in regard to non-conforming lots. Now, non-conforming lot, by definition, it does not conform to your ordinance standards. And essentially, it's because the lot was created prior to zoning in Iredell County. This is an equity issue that we have found. Essentially, if you can picture two lots, separate lots that are side by side, if Lot A is owned by a separate owner from Lot B, then both owners of Lot A and Lot B can build a house. However, if there is one owner of Lot A and Lot B, then our ordinance currently requires that the two lots be combined in order to come into more compliance with our ordinance. And again, we feel that's an equity issue, so this amendment is stating that regardless of ownership, you can build a house on a non-conforming lot, as long as you meet other standards as well. But again, we just feel that's an equity issue. Now, the second part of this, in Table 2.1, you will notice this applies to watershed requirements. That non-conforming lot requirement I just spoke of does not apply to lots that are in watersheds. So, I just wanted to clarify that. But essentially, in Table 2.1, you'll see two corrections in red. They're just corrections. They're not new regulations. It was just a, if you will, a mistake in creating the land development code. You'll see that the lot size for a lot in the protected area, watershed four, is 21780. And that's actually a model ordinance requirement from the state, from what I understand. So, that's just a correction. And I'll pause.
Any questions?
Okay. Third is consistency of our setback requirements in commercial districts. Again, this is a consistency issue, and we would like to make the setbacks for development in our highway business zoning districts the same as our neighborhood business and general business district. So, the front would go from 40 to 30, sides 20 to 10, rear stays the same, and the corners 30 to 20, just like the other two districts.
How does that compare to how the city of State's full and the town of Mooresville has their highway business?
Actually, I'm not sure. I don't have a lot of experience with that, but I do have Rebecca Harper, our senior planner. I don't know if she can offer any. We could certainly get you some information on that.
And I think, you know, we've tried to make it, I wouldn't say seamless transition as you cross the lines, but maybe the word compatible.
But certainly, we could provide you with some additional information on that.
I'm sure if you were going to do a roadway protection overlay plan with the municipality, you would come to some type of mutual agreement as to what that was going to be, right?
I believe that's what has always been done since enactment of our land development code and Horizon Plan especially. I think that was a lot of the research that went into creating both the Horizon Plan and the regulations in the land development code. I think that was a common philosophy there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, the next is simply allowing fraternal and social organizations to be permitted in our, I believe that's the resort residential in our 20 districts, by special use permit. And in creating the new code versus using the new code, we've had a few property owners come in that actually own property that would like to develop fraternal, a fraternal or social organization in one of those two districts, and we feel like it's fair to allow those to develop under special use permit in those districts as well.
Are retreat centers, is a retreat center recreational retreat, or is this like halfway house, halfway rehab-type house?
No, as far as I know, this does not, this is not rehab-type services. This would be something like Masonic Lodge or Elks Lodge, things of that nature, civic groups.
Under retreat centers?
Under the fraternal and social.
No, no, I was going down, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, excuse me. Yeah, the planning board actually wanted that table in there for comparative purposes only, and I apologize, I thought you were talking about the, let's see, retreat centers.
Like the one being amended, I'm talking about the one that's not being amended.
I haven't dealt with the retreat center definition here, Rebecca.
It's okay, Joe, they're separate. A retreat center is generally speaking somewhere where you're going to go for, you know, a weekend, team building, something like that. We have other standards in there for the treatment, I guess, side.
Okay, all right, good.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, thanks. And that's all for that particular one. The next one is accessory mobile homes. Again, this is just for clarification purposes in our ordinance. We have a lot of people there getting confused about when they can use an accessory mobile home, and it's only in the case where you have a site built or modular home already on the property. And simply, we're just adding the definition that's already in another part of the ordinance. We're just bringing it into the performance requirements for accessory mobile homes for clarification purposes, no new regulations.
Joey, what is the difference between a Class A or a B mobile home?
I believe it deals with size, like single wide, double wide, from what I understand, yes, sir.
Okay, any questions?
Next, temporary events. Currently, the ordinance allows for two temporary events on a piece of property each year or during the past 12 months. And we, in working with this requirement, we're finding that the temporary events we're dealing with, they want to have them more frequently, and I believe the Board of Adjustment actually gave a variance for a group to have more than two. So, we would like to increase this to allow four temporary events for any group on a given parcel. Also, we're finding that some of these temporary events are getting quite large, and we have to involve DOT, the Health Department sometimes, and asking them to submit an application only five days prior to the event is a little bit taxing, and we're not able to get that thorough review done and involve all agencies. So, we'd like to move that deadline up to 10 days prior to the event. And this is something that I do approve as a planning director, and I also have the ability to not allow temporary events to continue based upon past history if there are issues and they do not work with us to resolve them.
Why is there a limit now? I mean, why is there a limit to the amount of events you can have on a piece of property?
Sure. Typically, I would say from a temporary event standpoint, it's there to allow flexibility without having a lot of regulation placed on a property owner for use of their property. So, I think it's just a method to allow somebody to allow a gathering on their, a public gathering on their property without a whole lot of regulation and.
Why do we limit it to four? I mean, why is there, why is there the necessity for a number?
Well, quite honestly, I feel like if you allow indefinitely, it's probably going to be difficult to police. Most people we work with are very, very willing and to work with us, but I feel like you've got to put some limitations on some of these events because they get very large, these like tractor pulls and mud bogs and things of that nature where there could be a lot of safety issues. I think the trend in planning across this state at least is to try to have some control over those events.
If there are safety issues, would that not fall back on the responsibility of the property owner and not the county?
Oh, absolutely. But I do feel we have a due diligence upfront to at least try to work out as many of the preventable issues as possible.
I don't know why we're restricting property owners to only be allowed to have two and now four events on their property if they want to have special events on their property.
Well, I can, I won't say specifically what event it was or where it was, but history has taught that one group of persons amusement is another group of people's nuisance.
The planning director indicates they have the authority to say no.
Yeah, I understand, but I do think you got to be careful because I can think of one instance we ran in, we ran into considerations of the Health Department. We ran later on, ran into considerations of inspections because they had erected some structures that were, had never been inspected, and one of them was a pretty good-sized building. These things kind of take a life of their own sometimes, and if you've got several people out there in a building and it's never been inspected and somebody gets hurt, then...
Does this apply to churches?
As far as holding events on their property, no. This would be a parcel that may not have any structures on it initially. We're working with the group of fire departments in North Iredell. They're holding fundraiser events, temporary events to build funds to make their training grounds on that property in the future, but they're not ready to move that way permanently. So, that's another example of something.
Does it apply to schools?
For holding events on their property, no.
It does?
No, it would not, this would not apply, no.
I think like Union County or one of those counties over in that area are having trouble with people having stand-up rodeos, so to speak, and then all of a sudden they were having them every other weekend or every weekend, and the neighbors were saying, "Now, wait a minute now, this is, I mean, this is a business. It's not a zone business." You know, I mean, what's the difference between having, you know, it's the difference between having a couple of these things and having them every weekend?
But they have to apply for a permit every time, correct?
They would, yes.
Does this apply to nonprofits?
It would if they're not hosting it in an, like on a church property or school property, something that already has a building that they're using for their day-to-day activities, and they're just holding an ancillary-type event. No, this is strictly, truthfully undeveloped property where somebody has an idea to raise some money for a good cause, and it may be once that they do it, or it may be like that one group we're working with where they've got a goal in mind in the future, and so we're trying to be as flexible.
Glad to see that it's increased to four, but what's the rationale for four and not five?
Well, from what, from what I understand from talking with Rebecca and the staff, it seems like this will meet the historical trends that we see, because the Board of Adjustment did allow, I believe it was either three or four events, three events, to occur for one group. So, I would say let us work with this, and if we're seeing where people are coming in wanting five, six, seven, eight events, let us revisit that, but I think this fits the trend that we're seeing at this time, at least.
I would make an argument for some type of regulation here, because if you don't, you will have instances where people, for all intents and purposes, be conducting a commercial activity in an area that's not zoned for it. And if it is their intent to operate a legitimate business, there's a zoning process afforded to it. This is to keep down the abuse of people who, let's be honest, some people are less than ethical about what their intentions are in regard to these matters sometimes. That's a statement of, an observation of mind of human nature, let's stay it that way. So, I think some regulation is in order. I think, I think four is a reasonable number. I don't think it seriously limits the exercising of their property rights, but it would, it would, it would give pause to someone who was attempting to exploit an opportunity to the detriment of those around them.
So, would the planning board consider if someone came for the fifth time, then you would consider that it's a business, five times in a year, and you'd want them to get it rezoned?
No, not necessarily. Again, a lot of this is specific to the group that's requesting and specific to that event.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Okay, with our signage regulations, there are actually three changes that we're requesting, and again, the planning board has reviewed these as well. This language in red in front of you on the screen actually was in our ordinance, and we would like to bring it back. It was in our prior ordinance, but we'd like to bring it back into this and clarify this section by saying that one freestanding sign is allowed per parcel, but allow the flexibility that if there's a lot that has frontage on two streets, such as a corner lot, that they be allowed to erect two freestanding signs. And of course, all the maximum height and copy area restrictions still apply. So, this is just adding greater flexibility to allow additional signage on corner lots.
Why aren't business owners allowed to put up as many signs as they want on their property?
Well, typically, signs are aesthetic appeal, and from what I understand, when we, and again, I was not here when you rewrote your ordinance regulations, but I think we are working with about the same regulations that you've had in place for many years. And from what I understand, this did go through some public review and input through the planning board as well, but purely, it's a sign, it's an aesthetic-based criteria in planning world.
So, they buy their property, they pay taxes, and we tell them one sign?
We're trying to get them two on corner lots now, though.
I'm glad we're going to give them two. I think it's a move in the right direction.
Okay. I read through this, I didn't see anything as far as the setbacks or so forth. Mr. Smith, you recall, I want to make sure we're still adhering to that. Our setback on signs was more strict than what the DOT required. So, as far as a setback on these signs, it still remains in compliance with the DOT. I didn't see anything in here that would.
Yeah, it would definitely be in compliance with DOT. Are you talking about being the same as what DOT?
Yes, yeah, as far as, how far it's got to be in the line of.
I think we tried to do that when, oh, yes, yes. It definitely would do that.
That's the main thing, you know, we were, I think we were a little too strict on people before we brought in compliance, so nothing changes as far as the placement of the sign.
No, sir, we did not study that as part of this, no, sir.
And I will mention, since I spoke up, there are other signs than just the one or two that Mr. Roskowski is mentioning. There's wall signs that can go on buildings as well, so it's not just like you're limited to one. There are other options out there.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
And continuing with the sign, again, an added element of flexibility here. In this chart that you see before you, we felt that all lesser roads are your, like smaller connector roads inside cities, things of that nature. And just to give you an example, to break it down, in another part of the ordinance, like Mr. Smith was referring to, there's a whole other part that talks about a whole wealth of other signs that are allowed, but a church in a residential district right now can have 32 square foot of sign. And we were looking at this, seeing that a church, if it were to go in an office, an institutional or commercial district, would only be allowed 16 square feet of sign. So, we're just trying to, again, put some equity and consistency in our regulations, and actually, this allows for additional square footage than is there currently. and actually, this allows for additional square footage than is there currently. So that's the best example I can use for why we're suggesting that change.
This is barring that church in the city, the city, if it has stricter sign rule, then that sign ordinance would take precedent over the county.
Oh, absolutely, if it's inside the city jurisdiction, yes, ma'am. And then the last part of our sign ordinance amendments, this was actually in the zoning ordinance back in 2006, from what I understand, and at that time, we allowed greater flexibility for retail type, not retail establishments, but your typical automobile, filling station, restaurant, place of lodging, we allowed those, if they were within four hundred feet of an interstate intersection, to have the ability to have additional signs. That's not in the ordinance now, but we're seeing that trend and that request come to us. So again, this was a, to return to the 2006 time and actually add greater flexibility, and again, this is only for automotive service or filling stations, restaurants or places of lodging within four hundred feet right of way of an interstate interchange.
That's an issue up on Tomlin Mill Road that's been going on for a while, this'll maybe help those folks.
And again, we're limiting the height, it can be illuminated, we are eliminating the copy area in this amendment as well, but it's adding some greater flexibility. And the planning board wanted to see definitions of what a filling station and automotive service station was, so we added definitions for section sixteen dot four.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the work that you guys are doing to help with some of these limitations with the economic fact, the, just the climate that we're in, it's already difficult enough to go through every single, there's so many hoops that business owners have to jump through between federal, state, and local, and then we get down to the nitty gritty and that they finally get their business open, and we're still, you know, focused on the size of the sign. I think our climate in Iredell County, we need to do whatever we can to help businesses survive, and if our regulations are restricting, we need to look at modifying those across the board, so that when businesses look at places to come, they want to come to Iredell County, because there are a lot of hoops that people have to jump through. So I appreciate the, some of these limitations being looked at. I hope that this is a trend that we continue, and that we really look at these to make sure that we are helping small businesses and business owners do what they can to keep their businesses open. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this issue?
All right, and our last and final is our erosion control regulations, and I just want to remind you, as we go through this, we are actually charged with enforcing, we've agreed to enforce the state's model ordinance. And these changes that you see before you are changes that the state has basically sent down to us for us to change our model ordinance and begin enforcing. The only thing that we have suggested in this process is, in the first couple of slides, we are now requiring, and we're doing it now, we're requiring a pre-construction meeting occur between all parties involved, that seems to get a project off on the right foot to begin with, and everybody seems receptive of that, and it does seem to be working well for us. We just wanted to put it in writing in our steps, so that if somebody picks up the ordinance and wants to read it, they see that we're requiring that pre-construction meeting.
Pre-construction for all construction, residential business?
For anything that requires an erosion and sedimentation control plan.
So it could be residential?
No, this does not go down to the level of a single lot resident, no, ma'am. This is just your large scale, commercial type development, or it could be a full size subdivision that's under development, but it does not go down to the scale of the individual homeowner. Here in this chart, you will see, again, this is just copied from the state, what they're requiring as far as submission with erosion control plan requirements, and I'll go into as much detail or little detail on some of these specifics as you'd like, and I have Randall Moore with us here tonight, too. Again, this is just more verbiage regarding the requirement for a pre-construction conference, also requiring self-inspections, which is basically the contractor self-policing the site, making a report, and then making it available for us or the state to review.
Would a pre-construction meeting, if this were in place, would that have potentially addressed some of the issues that the homeowner that spoke earlier brought? Would have, would have, could it have potentially avoided an issue like that?
Well, with the knowledge I have of that case, probably not, because this is an over time issue that's occurred, so I'd say not, because everything from, from what I can tell in our records is on par as far as what we required upfront with that particular development.
I apologize for all the questions, but thank you for answering them.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what his issue was, was that the state, the state can inspect the road to see if it was built according to state standards, but they can't, nobody's there to inspect, how do we handle the water runoff?
Yeah.
And, and in that area, that development, there are, that's not the only problem that they've had with water, because they, they run storm, they run drains, so that they basically dump onto other people's property and wash them out.
And, and not to get off on that subject, I'll get it to Mr. Smith, but we do have some records of engineer certifications on that, that one development, too, so, but I'll get that to Mr. Smith. Okay, as far as these other requirements, this, the state is changing a lot of their timeframes to stabilize slopes from either seven or fourteen days, depending upon how flat these slopes are. So essentially, what, what this table puts in place are the state requirements for the slope and how long they have to stabilize it with some form of ground cover. And again, this is just another state change to clarify the seven and fourteen day rule in regard to slopes and ground cover. Also, what the state is requiring is de-watering devices to be installed on the surface of any type of measure that's being used that is greater than one acre in size, and again, this is for any type of development, this is for storm drainage ponds that are associated with developments, not just individual landowners on their property. And that ends your eight LDC amendments. Be glad to answer any more questions.
Any more questions?
If I could just make a comment, if that's all right. I want to thank you, the way that, there were a lot of changes here, and in some of the cases, the changes you referred to, another state regulation or reference, and instead of us wondering what that was, you actually, you actually had that, those as attachments or at the end of that particular segment of the document, which made it a whole lot easier to, at least in my eyes, to make sure that we weren't just approving some random, you know, some reference that somewhere down the road, we'd find out that that reference included something that maybe we wouldn't agree to at all. So I just thought the way you presented it was, in the written document, was easy to follow considering the difficulty it was to explain what you were doing, so thank you.
Well, I'm glad you found that helpful, thank you.
Okay, now this is a public hearing, folks, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter, feel free and come, come forward, say what's on your mind. Okay, we're declaring the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the changes as proposed by staff.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of these changes, and that comes from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to administrative matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to keep Joey on the, in the hot seat, he's got item number A, and that's an update regarding the expansion of the Charlotte urbanized area boundary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. I was before you in May to let you know that due to federal regulation and the 2010 census, and being adjacent to the fastest growing region in the United States, we are now part of the Charlotte urbanized area. That includes parts of Iredell, Troutman, Statesville, and Mooresville. At that meeting, I just briefed you on where we were at, it was the very initial stages. I do have some updates to that information, as well as what was presented to you in your packet, there have been some developments since then. There have been a series of meetings with the Charlotte Mecklenburg Union Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they have formed a subcommittee of their main TCC to study this issue, to help in the transition, to work out boundary issues, things of that nature, and their first meeting is actually tomorrow night, and I will be present at that meeting as well to represent Iredell and the municipalities if they can attend. Your main question to me and direction was figure out what the costs are, I'm sorry, I don't have those for you tonight. I did learn last week, this is honestly a little bit scary, they've had to hire a consultant to help figure out the fee schedule, so I'm going to do my best to engage with them and understand how they're going to come up with the fee schedule for membership in this metropolitan planning organization. And this also involves, again, the three towns. But I understand the city council will hire a consultant by action on June twenty-third, and we should have some preliminary estimates by August first.
The consultant is wearing a railroad hat, please sound the alarm. Why do, why do we have to participate?
Yeah, what are they going to do if we say no?
You can actually say no, that is an option. However, by federal regulation, the Metropolitan Planning Organization out of Charlotte still receives funds to do our transportation planning. The, I guess the risk we take if we say no is we will not be representing Iredell County at the table, in the vote.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Was that, was that clear for everybody who's, we do have that option, Ms. Griffith, to say no, but then we, we don't have a vote at the table when it comes to if we want to see a certain transportation project move forward.
I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this little organization, very uncomfortable that Mecklenburg County, that we're going to be lumped in with Mecklenburg County in the planning for roads. I'll just let the board know where I stand on that, it's probably no surprise, but it's, are they not gonna, I mean, are they going to stop their road construction projects at the Iredell Mecklenburg Line on seventy-seven because we're not in this district? I don't think so, because our folks work in Mecklenburg County, I mean, and who's paying for the consultant? Will we be required to share in the fees of the consultant?
No, no, we are not, none of the, the, anything we pay into the new MPO will not be effective until next fiscal year, and they're using existing planning monies from the federal government to fund any type of studies that they're doing now in regard to the transition.
Is there the potential that we would have to vote on this before we know the cost associated with it?
No, ma'am, no. You will know and have all the answers to your questions either by me or through the MPO before you, you vote on this issue. What I'm here tonight is to give you for information only, and also just to get a general consensus from you on some scenarios that we're, we're playing around with as far as membership, because it goes beyond Charlotte as well, we've got to worry about the northern portion of the county, too.
I mean, right now, we use Lake Norman RPO, but don't we use some of our COG hours to pay for the administration of that organization? I mean, because Bjorn, he's, he's a employee of COG, and he's the, he's kind of the staffer that takes care of it. What I don't understand is why would, I understand they're changing, they're changing it, so Lake Norman RPO, which is the way that we gave our planning input to the state, is going away and the MPO or whatever is taking over. I understand that, I, I, when I asked the question originally, I was on a different wavelength, I thought you were talking about something different. I understand that Lake Norman RPO is going away, this MPO is coming in, my question is why aren't we funding it the same, same way, I guess through COG, because that's what Bjorn did for us.
And, and we do, we have a membership fee that we pay to the COG, but it's for our participation in Lake Norman RPO, it's about forty-eight hundred dollars a year, and that is based upon population. That's the way the Lake Norman RPO structures their, their fees. Now, each RPO and each MPO, they can have a different variety of ways in how they structure their fees.
How much is our fee to COG per year?
Forty-eight hundred dollars per year, for the, now, this is just to support the Lake Norman RPO. You probably have other dues that you paid at the COG as well, I would, I would imagine to be members of the COG.
Joey, can I insert one thing here?
Please.
Maybe, maybe just something to think about, because I'm basically in your camp on this, as far as the jurisdictional issues and who's planning for who. The county line is the delineation between two different funding districts in the state. So that's something that Joey and I have talked about a little bit, as far as can we establish an entity, even if it's part of the overall MPO, which is going to happen, establish some entity that is separate but joined to do our own work, so to speak. So we have a bigger role to play in the overall organization, and I think that that line, that funding line, might be a good trigger to allow us to have some negotiating power there as we go forward in this process. I don't know if that's an option or not, but, you know, it seems like that's been considered.
Well, it's just like with the light rail, they want to come one mile into Iredell County and have us share the bulk, you know, a good portion of the expense, to come one mile into our county with no plans of ever moving it forward, and no, no end to the amount of money that we will pay forever, because they've now come into Iredell County. And if they're going to do it anyway, then I'll vote no strictly on principle, because at some point, we, we can say no to the federal government, I mean, there, we have to at some point. They can't just continue to force things down people's throats, and if they're going to do it, then we say, I say no on the principle of no, just no. It's good to tell people no every now and then, especially...
Are you saying we would have like our own, our own planning, our own appointees to the MPO, or we would have our own MPO and thereby appointing our own people, we would have more representation?
We're, we're going to have to fall into the, to MPO's organizational structure, and Joey, you chime in if I say something wrong.
Sure.
We're definitely going to have to, to fall into their structure. What I'm suggesting is that possibly we change this, we try to change the structure somewhat, where although we're part of MPO, Statesville, Troutman, Mooresville, and Iredell County have more influence on what goes on north of the county line, but we're still part of that organization, and I think that the funding is maybe where we could negotiate that out with them.
And that has already been talked about somewhat at staff levels between staff in our jurisdictions and the MPO staff, so they're, they're aware that we would like some kind of agreement or, other than the standard practice, and we're not alone. Other folks in Gaston County and Catawba and those areas, they're all going through the same thing, so we're not alone in this, this endeavor.
But according to the state, this is the way that we're allowed to give input into the...
the road planning, and it's this way or no way.
And it's actually the, it's, it's a federal, federal highway administration that trickles down through the state, yes.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay, the polls are now closed, but elections have consequences at all levels.
But you have to have, at some point, you're gonna have to have some relations with them just to see what they're up to, and whether you're gonna be harmed by it. You know, as much, I don't mean any harm toward anybody, but one thing that concerns me is, I'll just say it, of the COG, the parents of the people who work for COG had an affinity of giving them European names, and that just scares the bejesus out of me. I'm sorry, it just does. I mean...
So what authority?
People think different, I do. So at some point, you gotta have a relationship with them to let them know that, hey, this is not okay, because, you know, they listen to, they listen to Raleigh and Chapel Hill so much that they forget how it impacts people out here in the real world sometime.
I'd like to know what type of authority they would have if we opt out. Are they still, I guess, they have authority over the roads, basically?
Well...
And decision on what happens to them?
They are in future planning of transportation improvements. It, it's not that they have control over existing roads necessarily that are already built. It's, this organization is solely there to help with multimodal future planning efforts.
And we don't know how many people we'll have representing our county on the board, do we?
Not at this point. And that's part of the memorandum of understanding, which this subcommittee that MUMPo has appointed of, of their current membership is gonna be working with staff. And, and also, these meetings are very, they're, they're open to any elected officials. We're just getting started in this meeting cycle, so I will continue to pass updates and invitations. You're more than...
There's no, there's no action necessary tonight. This is just an update.
It is, and, and the only other thing I just wanted to cover with you very quickly, if I could, Mr. Chairman, is my two scenarios, cause I wanna leave you with this thought, cause I, I will need your feedback, if not tonight, at some point in the near future. The towns of Mooresville, Troutman, and Statesville have already, either at staff level or like Mooresville officially, they have stated that they would like to include in the MPO their boundaries for the long-range transportation planning area for their jurisdiction. In this map, you will see the brown shaded areas. Those outline the extent of the territory that would be included to the MPO by each municipality if that boundary request is honored. It's a lot of territory in Iredell County, and what you'll notice is the yellow area that's south of the South Yadkin River in the western port, port, part of the county, that's the only area that's outside any of these municipal long-range transportation planning boundary areas. And then we have the whole northern part of the county above the South Yadkin River that with the Lake Norman RPO, it's gonna shrink, and it's gonna shrink so far to the west, it would not be contiguous to us, and that will not be beneficial to us. So as you can see to the west, there's Uni4 RPO, and, and I've already had some staff level discussions with them, and they're very receptive to us joining their RPO for the northern half of the county. And the characteristics of the area and the commuting patterns, things of that nature, all lean towards the Uni4 RPO. So I think that relationship will be solid. However the boundary works out, I think that's gonna be a good relationship for us. Now, one boundary, which is scenario B, that has gotten a lot of discussion, is everything south of the South Yadkin River to be considered for placement into the Metron, MPO, excuse me. So there are some benefits to that, transportation planning-wise, in that our major corridors of 40, 70, all of those corridors are, are holistically going to be planned by one transportation planning agency that represents that portion of Iredell County. It's not split up amongst two planning agencies.
Doesn't MUMPo just snake up like this? Doesn't it just snake up into our county?
It actually does.
Just jumps?
And I apologize.
You use those definitions, hop, skip, and jump?
I did, I did.
So that they could get their boundaries?
And I apologize, I should've had that loaded in this PowerPoint, but it, it engul, it encompasses Mooresville, and then there's a tiny sliver for Troutman, and then a lot of Statesville is included.
Have they given any rationale as to why they did that and didn't just go broad?
Well, and it wasn't...
Why they just snaked it up?
It wasn't the MPO, it was actually the Census Bureau, the Federal Census Bureau, and their guidelines. The MPO ultimately, I, I will have to say, not in their defense, but in their corner, so to speak, they've been handed this by the federal government to handle.
Okay.
They did not say, yes, we want Iredell County. But they are being told by the federal government that you have Iredell County, and you've got to do this. That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
And, I was just gonna say, under the Lake Norman RPO, I mean, you know, we were with other counties that were more similar to us, and, you know, Bob Ostel was the chairman for a while, and, and he understood our issues, cause he's from Cherryville, and it, we were okay with that, but we were also outside of the big, the big, the big population center, which is Charlotte. And sometimes we wondered, because we weren't part of their, of their, in their body, that because we were more rural and more, some of the smaller counties, that, that maybe we didn't get as close a seat to the table. So in some ways, being in with Charlotte, there may be more money going into that district. The real question and I, and concern on your part and on all of our parts is, okay, well, if we're in with this MUMPo, I hate using that word, too, but if we're in that district, we just wanna make sure that Charlotte doesn't get all the money.
And, and I can say that we are in a totally different funding region now, the way it's structured at state level than Charlotte. We, we are in Division 12, which is funded separately, and Mike Holder, as you know him very well, he's been very active in this process and very reassuring that, you know, he is, he's looking out for the best interests of, of everybody involved in this transition.
Well, I've got a lot of confidence in Mr. Holder. I think we gotta be careful that the, not too many of the transportation decisions affecting Iredell County are made by the majority of the people of any board who live outside Iredell County. And I know we're not a sovereign nation, although from time to time, I am tempted to secede from the union. But nevertheless, you gotta be careful of those folks down there.
Well, what I will guarantee you is, if you will, let me get some cost information back to you after August 1st. And also, they are very well aware that we would like to see some kind of other structure when it comes to considering and voting on projects in, in our area.
Okay.
And right now, I just wanna leave you with scenario B to, to think about. This is what's being talked about at this point, but also scenario B plays very strongly into the fee structure that's gonna be studied by this consultant. So that's where we'll start. We'll start with the biggest area first, get you some fees. I'll continue engaging at staff level with them, and I'll let you know of future opportunities that if, if any of you as an elected official would like to participate, you can.
Okay. Well, thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The next item we have is item number B, and it's a request for approval of budget amendment number one for the purpose of funding the Union Grove Fire Department $19,729.25 as a match to a grant from the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal. Ronnie Thompson is sick tonight, so he's not gonna make this presentation, and, so I'll try and work through it, but Nolan Schumaker is here from Union Grove in case I get off track. Basically, this is a funding request. We're gonna match, or the proposal is to match a grant of over $19,000 that Union Grove VFT has recently been awarded.
Okay.
And that money would come from appropriated fund balance.
From their fund balance?
From the overall fund balance.
Of the fire tax money?
Okay. Any questions? Not, floor's open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Okay, motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is item number C, or item C, request for approval of a lease-purchase master agreement and other documents required for the Information Technology Services virtualization project, and this is also including budget amendment number two.
Yes, thank you. In June, I brought to you the proposal for a 59-month lease purchase for our virtual, virtualization project for ITS. We have the documents. Bill Pope has reviewed them, and I would submit them for your approval. I will say that this agreement includes a non-appropriations clause, which means that if a future board should choose not to appropriate the funding, the equipment's returned, and it's, it's done. You don't have to make up any difference, it's just the security is in the equipment itself, and it will not bind future boards.
Okay.
And the reason I asked for the budget amendment is just a technical accounting move. We have to recognize the value of the lease. It's not, we're not gonna get the, the money in and then spend it out, but we have to recognize the value because we are fund accounting.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Floor's open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval. Motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Item D is a request for approval to award a purchase contract for three new ambulance chassis. These are the, the remounts that we included in the budget this year, and Dean La...
While he's coming forward, I'll take just a minute. Mr. Roskowski, I want you to be sure to congratulate Randy on his appearance tonight.
I will.
You look very professional, and I think he should be encouraged to continue in that effort. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. La.
Good evening. As Mr. Smith said, the current, currently approved FY 2013 budget did include for three additional ambulance remount to be purchased this year. Total budget for that project is $285,259. We did go out to bid to secure new prices on those units. The prices came in, the low bid came in at $80,998 per unit for a total of $242,994, substantially below budget and also below last year, or the last purchase price of these vehicles. Purchasing EMS staff did review the project bids, the project specifications. Our recommendation is to the low bidder, Northwestern Emergency Vehicles for their bid. The contract, if proved, includes two clauses in it that'll help EMS move forward quickly if it, if it needs to in the near future. First of all, it's an additional quantities clause that allow them to buy units singly or multiple if the board approves the funds for it. They can move very quickly on that, and it'll be at the same price as this bid price we're noting tonight. Additionally, excuse me, additionally, the contract would allow for a one-year contract extension option. That option would allow the vendor to present a moderate or modest price increase if manufacturers present them evidence that the increase is necessary. This, again, would allow EMS to move forward quickly in the event that the future year budgets allow for additional ambulance remounts. I apologize. So recommendation is a request is to approve this contract and allow us to be able to purchase these from Northwestern.
We don't know of any problems that folks have had with this type of ambulance or this type of truck. I know a few years ago, we had those, I'll just say it, had those Fords, and that was a nightmare with the six-liter engines, but are we running these vehicles, and they're doing pretty well? I believe we... Steve? Steve, if you'd come speak to that, or some other agencies running these vehicles and had pretty good luck with them?
Uh, no, sir. Talk about the Ford 6.0-liter diesel motor is what you're talking about.
Yeah, we got away from those. I'm just talking about these Chevrolets here. You don't know of anybody in there?
Oh, no, sir. The, it's Chevrolet 4500 chassis with the Duramax motor in it. It's pretty much the, I wanna say the gold standard of the industry right now, as far as top-three ambulances go.
Just always, since that last episode of those other ones?
Absolutely.
We had to borrow one from Rescue Squad one weekend. Anytime we buy an ambulance, I ask that question.
Yeah. The continuation clause that's in there in, in this bid is specifically because we'll have three more. We're gonna come up three trucks short. We're still gonna have three 6.0-liter Fords after we get through this bid package.
Okay.
They're actually running pretty good, the three that we're putting off, but due into history, we kinda felt like we need to be able to pull the trigger, you know, quickly.
Yeah, that's probably sound logic.
Probably.
I've never seen a bid come in as close as this one. Have you used Northwestern and Southeastern both before?
Yes, sir. Historically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Northwestern has been doing our construction. This is the one of, this past year was the first time we actually went through the remount process, where we're taking the box off of a chassis and putting a new chassis up underneath it. We still owned the box. Northwestern was not, well, Southeastern got this previous bid, the, the three trucks that we're working on right now. Northwestern wasn't too happy about losing our business, and they came in $1. They won the bid by $1, and that was amazing.
Yeah, I'd like people out in the audience to know that was $1 on a $80,998 bid, so $1 didn't make a difference.
It was some psychology. Somebody had some cards out, and crystal ball and everything to get that.
Yeah, that is close. Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, any other questions? Were you through, Mr. La? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right, sir, I'm clear.
Okay. All right, if you have nothing else?
That's it.
No questions, the floor's open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Okay, motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next item E, which is memo number eight, is the result of a request that you made of me about a month ago to look into our fee schedule in relation to scout projects and, and things of that nature. And what I came back with after consulting with our Director of Code Enforcement and the Central Permitting Manager, we currently have a, a base fee or a minimum fee for building permits of $60. And what I've suggested is that we go with the base fee and just charge that plus the, I think it's a technology fee that's on top of that, which would equal out to $61.80. Excuse me. But give the Central Permitting Manager, who's in charge of issuing all these permits, some flexibility in making sure that these projects meet the intent. Because after I started trying to define all of them and we were working together, it was gonna be impossible. So I think if we give them a little bit of leverage and, and license to figure out what's right, charge them the minimum fee, I think that's a, probably a fair way to go about it.
Okay.
And this would help the scouts. My, my scout troop, I think we have three or four different Eagle projects going on right now, and, and it, it's, it's a big deal, because these boys are, in addition to doing the project, they're having to wash cars and have hot dog sales and stuff like that to raise money, so this is in the direction of good.
Okay, floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like the honor to make this motion that we decrease the zoning and building permit fees for small-scale construction projects that satisfy a requirement or goal for a club or organization such as Eagle Scout or similar projects.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item F is a request from NCACC for an annual conference voting delegate. Conference is gonna be on Saturday, or I'm sorry, it's gonna be August 16th through 19th, and that's a Thursday through a Sunday. And the voting session or the business section, session is gonna be on Saturday, August 18th. And the voting session or the business session is going to be on Saturday, August 18th, from 2:30 to 4:30. And there's some information in here about the conference itself.
Okay, we have a volunteer.
I don't know if I can go to it, but I'll tell you, I thought we were well-served this year. These guys went in, they went to bat. This organization has become more conservative because the board, the commissioners are, across the state are more. And they really went to bat for us, I think, preserving our revenue streams and fighting the unfunded mandates and stuff. So, you know, whereas in the past, sometimes we, we kind of blew off whether or not it was worth our time to participate. I kind of think it's a worthwhile effort now.
I don't mind, I enjoy going to the conferences. I learn a lot and meet a lot of people. Try to create some good, what do you call them? Relationships with other commissioners. So, I'll be happy to go. I just want to go down for the one day, though. I don't want to attend the entire conference, the one-day event.
Are you going to go the week or the weekend?
I'll go on Saturday so I can vote.
Okay. All right.
I'll attend the sessions and vote.
Okay, I move to appoint Mr. Renee Griffith as our voting delegate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item G is a request for approval of the June 2012 refunds and releases, and everything seems to be in order.
Okay, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item H is a request for approval of the June 19th, 2012 minutes.
Okay. For no corrections, the floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the final administrative item is aye, and that's a request from the Fire Marshal's Office for consideration for approval of a pyrotechnic application for a private wedding. And Garland Clower, our Chief Deputy Fire Marshal, is here.
I want this motion. Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm here again, real quick, without a holiday being here. So, again, we have a application that's been submitted to us from Mr. Joel Matthews, East Coast Pyrotechnics. You probably remember his name. He has done a lot of the programs in the county. I think he did this year, the landing at Lake Norman, and also the Queens landing this year. What he's requesting for you to consider is a pyrotechnic show at a private wedding ceremony that will be conducted at Kerrigan's Farm in Mooresville. And we have went and done the review like we normally do with a public display. We did not have the specialties, like the FAA and the Coast Guard requirements to get their approvals, and they have passed everything. We only had one concern, and that was the wooded area that this area is located in. And we've asked the Fire Department of South Ireland to give us a little special consideration and provide a little bit more protection, just in case there would be a stray shell or maybe a fire in the wood line. And so, they have agreed to do that. So, I present in front of you this application for your approval, and we recommend that it does pass.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Clower? All right, floor's open for a motion.
At the risk of sounding like a big intrusive government with Republicans wanting to get in your bedroom, I will nevertheless, I will make the motion that the Ireland County Board of Commissioners will authorize the newlywed couple of Mr. and Mr. Crumbine to have fireworks on their wedding night.
I would never politicize a wedding like that. Nevertheless, my folks, if I had that kind of money, I'd ask them for a couch.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We have no announcements of vacancies that I'm aware of, and we'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have Troutman Plannings only board ETJ, one appointment. Troutman officials have a recommendation. Mr. Chairman, I nominate Katie Barnwell.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move to close the floor to nominations. Appoint Katie Barnwell by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Any unfinished business? I have one thing I'd like to make you aware of. The fair supper is going to be on August the 23rd. It's going to be at the Civic Center this year. Jim Head wanted me to make that announcement.
Okay, August 23rd?
August 23rd, yes, sir. It says it's just too hot down at the fairground at that time of year. You don't have a time, do you?
Uh, 6 o'clock.
The State's Civic Center?
Yes, sir.
Any other unfinished business? Public comment period, we have Mr. Jerry Carr, who has signed that 154 Deerfield Lane. Mr. Carr here?
Good evening, board members. If I speak a little loud, tell me to slow down because my hearing is bad. I'm here tonight just to ask for help on Deerfield Lane Road. The Postal Service has notified us that they're going to take the Postal Service away from us. And from what I've been told, you've turned this thing down several times, and we need help on that road out there real bad. And, because there's a lot of senior citizens out there, I don't know if you can do the road and put it on our tax bills. I went around and talked to all the people, and they're in favor of putting it on their tax bills. So, this is, I mean, right now, we can't even get an ambulance down that road to get anybody out. And I'd hate to see somebody pass away out there because, I mean, I'm on option 24-hour, 24/7, and I have a hard time getting the guy down there to take care of me. And the reason I bought that place was, I came down from Niagara Falls, New York, one year ago. I bought that place because my son was going overseas. He had no place for his kids to stay. So, Grandma and I volunteered to help him out. And he went over to Bill Rhodes. And he come back here and he says, Dad, he says, I don't know why the North Carolina can't do these roads over here for you. He said, we go over there and get shot at in the building roads. He's why you can't do the roads here and give us a safe way in, safe way out. I mean, right now, the road is so bad that I've done, replaced the front end in my vehicle already. And I'm just asking for some help from you people. That's about all I have to say right now until the next meeting.
Mr. Carr, it says here 75% petition. How many of the people in that development do you think would be willing?
Well, I've went around for the last two weeks, and I've got signatures on papers like that of 23 right now. The other, I don't know how you'd put this, but there's a couple of people in their own four and five places. So, do they get four and five votes?
I would say each lot owner for each lot would have to-
Would have to pay it.
That's what I would think, so.
Yeah. Well, the neighbor next to me, which is a pastor, he owns four houses down there. And he says he doesn't mind paying it. And he signed one of them himself. I mean, my wife and I bought this house. Now, my son is having a little problem. I had to go buy another house for him just down the road from me. Now, so I got two houses. I'm a, I don't mind paying my share, you know?
What's, have you had an estimate what it would cost to pave the roads?
Oh, I haven't, sir. That's why I've tried to, I've called a lot of people. I don't know how many people I've called. And I just can't get nobody to come out there and give us an estimate. And that's why I figured maybe the board can get somebody to come out.
I've had experience with this for several years with this problem. Developments planted after '76, and my experience is that people will not even chip in to put gravel on it, and it'd be almost impossible to get a 75% here for mandatory participation. It's very difficult. I even own a piece of property myself that we had to pave. We paved it, my wife and I, and some of the lot owners did not participate. They ended up getting benefit of a paved road in front of their lots, which later they sold for a good profit. But has the county, Mr. manager, ever participated in any of these pavement jobs?
I think we have one that we've done in the past, and that was back in '89, I believe. And actually, ironically, I'd pulled some information that Mr. Roskowski had put together for me on another issue, and this one has come up before back in 2000. The estimate, there was an estimate then, it's a pretty big range. Back then, it was between $56,700 to $95.5. So, pretty big range of an estimate.
And what year was that?
This was in 2000.
Well, it'd be greatly higher than that day.
But the one, the only one that we have a record of is in 1989. That's Wildwood Estates, off of Janes, Janes Hours Road.
I think that was on the state maintained list, though.
Yes, yes, that's true, that's true.
And the county put the money up, had the road paved, and then you put a lien on the properties, and they paid it annually. Is that how it worked?
The, those that signed the petition fronted a good bit of the money, $23,000 out of $29,000 on that project. And then the remaining amount was assessed over five years to the property owners.
Well, that was a state-maintained road, right?
Yeah, it was already on the system, yes.
Well, I understand that you got to bring it up to state standards before they'll take it over. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this one is a dirt road now, or does it have gravel on it?
Pardon?
Is your road currently just a dirt road, or does it have-
It's got a little of everything on it.
Got a little bit of everything, okay.
I mean, we got to get some help in there for the senior citizens that's out there right now. I mean, I'm 73 years old and hope to live a long time with my grandchildren because I come down here to be with them. And, but I don't want to be on the road like that. And I'm asking for you guys to give me a helping hand somehow.
The concern that I've had over the years, Mr. Carr, quite frankly, is I'm fearful if we do it for one person, we're going to have them wound out the door. And what is going to be the cost of that? It's still, at one time, there was close to 200 miles of unpaid roads in this county, unimproved roads, and I don't know that that number's gone down significantly. And that'd be an astronomical amount of money if we were to embark on that thing. I don't know that our great-grandchildren would ever complete the task. But if you, if it cost $100,000, then you were going to let those folks pay it over five years, then you're going to pay the $100,000 out and you get $20,000 back a year. And other group people come, pretty soon, you're going to run into a cash flow problem. You're going to have a whole lot of money out there on credit, assuming that these folks are going to pay it. And that's going to fall back on the taxpayers. And I'm sympathetic to retired folks, but in order to do this, I'm going to have to take money from a retired person somewhere else to improve this road. And I don't know how fair that is to them. That's the dilemma you run into in these kind of things. And so, here's the Board of Commissioners. We can't look at one road, we have to look at the whole county. There's a lot of folks out there who are in the same situation you're in, and we're talking about an awful lot of money. I've been on that road. I got a friend who used to go to my church, lived on that road, and I used to give him as good ways I've either way. But from time to time, I'd take him home after church, and the road was in pretty bad shape then. I agree with you. But that's always been my concern, is it's going to be a cash flow problem. And at one point, how do you come up with a criteria where you tell the next person no? And what is going to be the extent of how far the county's going to go into this thing as far as its exposure to the repayment of these construction costs? Because if you get four or five of these things working at one time, you could be into a million dollars easy. Is this a development up off Old Maxwell Road?
Pardon?
Is this one up off of Old Maxwell Road? Is that where that one's at?
Yeah, or Old, no, not Old, Buffalo Schultz.
Oh, Buffalo Schultz, okay.
That's in the other end.
It's right there off of the airport road.
I wonder if Mumpo would come help.
Because everyone that I've talked to out there, they're willing to have it put on their taxes and to pay so much upfront.
Well, my understanding, you're going to come back to see us?
On 17th, I believe.
Okay, when you come back, can you have some idea what they're willing to pay and upfront?
What the cost would be.
And what the total cost of this project could be?
I have no, I can't get nobody to come out there, sir. I've tried for the past three weeks. Have, I had one guy to come out the other day. He said he'd go down, just gravel down to my house, which is seven houses down. And it was $29,000, and that was cutting the grade, or the ditches in, draining the water where it's supposed to go and meet standards. So, and that's about half of the whole thing. And that's just for gravel, and he didn't, that's not in, I think it was 30, I believe 39,000, 39, or yeah, 39,000 if he put blacktop in. Which I didn't think was very, you know, very expensive myself.
Well, we got delivered, the county's not, Mr. Carr, the county's not in the road construction business.
Well, I know that.
We're expressly prohibited from doing that by state law. So, somebody on your end is going to have to come up with a number before we can even consider the thing. You're going to have to come up with a price on what it's going to take, what your neighbors are willing to do. And we can't go out there and make them do that. They got a social and personal initiative here. If they're unwilling to do that, I don't know if we can do anything to help.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm just trying to be honest with you and not create any false impression. But, you know, we don't have, we don't have an engineer on staff who can go out and look at it, design the thing, draw up plans for it, and estimate the cost. We don't have anybody to do that. I can, if you want to call me tomorrow morning, I can give you the names of some gentlemen who are in that line of work. And I won't do it here in front of everybody because I might be showing a preference over one customer over another. I don't want to make any of them mad, but if you'll call me, I can give you some names of people to come out there and look at it for you.
Well, I appreciate somebody to do something.
Okay. My contact number's on the county website. Or you can call our clerk in the morning, she'll give you my number. Don't call me too early because about 10 o'clock in the morning, I'm wide open. But give me a call, I can give you a couple of names of people I'm sure will come out and look at it for you.
All right, thank you very much, Chairman.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, Chairman.
All right. I believe Mr. Carr was all ahead under the public comments section?
Yes.
All right. Any new business come to our attention? County managers report?
I've got a couple of things I wanna hand out to you. And one is, there's a notebook, and I put something in the front cover. I wanna give to you a, an industrial land use study. We had talked about this a while back that I had asked the planning department to take a look at. We were talking at one point about a specific area, but they've gone ahead and looked at the whole county. So, basically looking at industrial zoning designation, or industrial land use designations in the whole county, and given some suggestions on some areas we may wanna take a look at. But I'll be honest, they're very few and far between. I think we're pretty well covered. But that's a pretty exhaustive study of it. I think they did a really good job on that. So, what I'll ask Mr. Roskowski to do is come back at a later date after you've had a chance to take a look at it and give you a report, just basically summarize it. The other thing is a mailing that I got, and it sounds like maybe some of you have already gotten this as well. It's a citizens information workshop on the I-77 high occupancy toll, the hot lanes. They are gonna be holding a meeting on August first at Cornelius Town Hall, four to seven, and August second at the Ivory Baker Rec Center in Charlotte from four to seven, if you wanna get any additional information on those. And the final thing I'll add, add is some thanks because I appreciate the EMS approval tonight. Those folks worked really hard getting those, those bid packages together, and Dean as well. We need them, and we need them quick. And we've asked them to move forward pretty quickly, so thank you.
Okay. Is that all you have?
Yes.
At this point, I'd offer a motion we go into closed session for property acquisition. That's General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight six, and personnel, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight six. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries in.
In a while, yeah.
In a while, yeah.
Salt is of our closed session this evening. At this point I'd offer a motion to reward a 2% performance pay increase for the county manager and the registered deeds. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. If there's no other business to come to our attention, I'll offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Ooh.
You don't want another time.